Hello, it's 7:30 and I would now like to call our regular monthly meeting of the Downers Grove Public Library Board of Trustees to order. Kaitlyn, can you proceed with the roll call, please?
Trustee Doherty.
Here.
Trustee Gagani.
Here.
Trustee Humphreys.
Here.
Trustee Kuntia.
Here.
Trustee Stapleton.
Here.
President Graber.
Here, thank you very much. We're now on to agenda item number three, the welcome to our visitors. Thank you to all the visitors at our, at our meeting and we appreciate your interest in the library. Thank you very much. We're now on to agenda item number four, approval of last month's minutes. Does anyone have any questions or comments regarding last month's minutes? And if not, do we have a motion to approve?
I have one.
Jonathan, I had one. Under, I'm sorry, my other computer broke, so I'm doing this on my phone. I don't have my glasses on. Under Financial Matters, under item number, I think it's B, December 2020 invoices, my name is spelled wrong. It's not really a correction, I'm just saying that my name's spelled wrong. Just so.
Yes, it is. Sorry about that. I will fix that in the final draft.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve the minutes with the correction that Barnali noted? Okay, I think, so is that Barnali and Swatna? Okay.
Kim and Swatna.
Okay, Kim and Swatna. Okay, so we have a motion to approve last month's minutes that has been seconded. Kaitlyn, can you proceed with the roll call, please?
Trustee Doherty.
Yes.
Trustee Gagani.
Yes.
Trustee Humphreys.
Yes.
Trustee Kuntia.
Yes.
Trustee Stapleton.
Yes.
President Graber.
Yes, thank you very much. We have approved last month's minutes. We're now on to agenda item number five, Financial Matters. Julie, can you let us know how we've started the year? And then I think we also have the final numbers for 2020.
Yes, so for our final 2020, this is, that report is in your packet. Our revenues stand at 100.81% collected, so that is a stellar thing for a year like 2020. Our capital expenditures, I would like to note the masonry project that came in so far under budget in 2020. We are, we're at 53% of our budgeted expenditures for the Capital Replacement Fund in 2020. And we got all of the 2020 projects plus done for that amount. So if you remember, we did some BAV boxes in addition, and we also did some more lighting things in addition to the masonry doors projects that were the main things for 2020. So yay. And then our operating expenditures in 2020, the final tally was 95.6% spent. So we did come in decently under budget, slightly over a quarter of a million dollars under budget. So that was a great end to 2020 as far as I'm concerned. And we're into January, so the month of January puts us 8.3% into the fiscal year 2021. As you can see, our revenues are only at 0.27% collected. That is typical for us due to our regular tax collection timetable. You really won't see anything rolling in there until a little bit in May, and then we get really rolling. And by October, you generally see that top line where the current property taxes really get up to that 100%, which makes all the difference for us. For our Capital Replacement Fund, the expenditures are at 1.7%. That is prebid work done by construction management and the architectural firm to get us to where we are today on this project. And we'll have some more good news on that as we get further into this agenda. For the expenditures for January, I just want to highlight a couple of the budget lines that are significantly over budget. 5346 data processing services is at 13.1% spent. That line is primarily items that are quarterly or annual fees. The most significant being the Swan Cooperative Catalog Consortium fees that are paid quarterly. 5392, the postage line is at 23.5% spent. If you remember, we actually pay that out in lump sums to the postmaster in advance and then use the money on that account to send our, our newsletter, which is our, of course, largest expense being that, that bi-monthly newsletter that goes to homes throughout Downers. And 5420, you will notice is at 80.9%. That is insurance, other policies. That includes the LIRA package policy for property and liability. That is an annual cost that comes in January of each year. So that has been paid in advance. So you won't see a whole lot of movement on that. I believe the workers' comp policy has not yet been paid, so that will be the, the only other significant amount paid out of that line for the year. And then 5770, if you, that is capital equipment at 19.3% spent. You will recall from last month, our conversation about the server that decided it was going to die. So that would be the purchase of the new server and the attendant expenses there. I believe as far as the vendors, excuse me. Everything else should be pretty self-explanatory. If you have any other questions.
Do we, do you have a sense of, I know last year, you know, the additional expenses for like the protective equipment and some others, do you have a sense of kind of where that may be? I know we're early, but you know, maybe additional cleaning expenses, I mean, things like that where that may be headed?
Ian actually moved some things around in the budget for 2021 to get some more money into that supplies line and kind of tighten things up in some other lines in anticipation of primarily the costs that we're seeing is PPE. And so he has really done his best to make this budget reflect as best we could guess where we were gonna wind up.
Was this also, it seems like this is early to have the final numbers for 2020. Is that, am I just imagining that? It seems like in prior years, it came in a little bit later than that.
So we get our final numbers from the village generally in February, but I think you're thinking of the audited numbers, which that actually doesn't generally come until about June.
Okay.
And that's final, final. So this is the final according to the village's finance department. And then if the auditor wants to make any additional changes, that happens in June. There generally aren't any. But every now and then, they'll make an adjustment here and there. They'll decide that something was charged to 2020 that should have been to 2021 or whatever. The number one thing is those final little bits for making that transfer from the operating fund to the capital reserve fund. And we always wait until those final audited numbers to do that.
Okay. Sounds good. Do we have any questions or comments regarding the financial matters? Okay, do we have a motion to approve the financial matters as presented, which includes the final 2020 year-end financial report, January 2021 financial report and the February 2021 invoices?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the financial matters as presented, which has been seconded. Kaitlyn, can you proceed with the roll call, please?
Trustee Doherty.
Yes.
Trustee Gagani. Trustee Humphreys.
Yes.
Trustee Kuntia.
Yes.
Trustee Stapleton.
Yes.
President Graber.
Yes, thank you very much. The financial matters as presented have been approved. We're now on to agenda item number six, public comment on agenda items. Do we have any public comment on agenda items? I don't know if anything was submitted.
No comments have been submitted.
Okay, thank you. Now on to agenda item number seven, public comment on other library business.
No comments.
Okay, thank you very much, Jen.
You're welcome.
We're now on to agenda item number eight, new business. Agenda item 8A is the Roof Replacement Project Bid Award. Julie, do you want to direct us to the appropriate parties?
Absolutely. We have four guests with us here tonight. Well, I'm not sure Ian actually counts as a guest. Our building operations director, Ian Noor, you know, staff, whatever you want to call him. From product architecture, we have Alex Krug, who's showing on your screen as caller two. And then from Shales McNutt, our construction management firm, we have John Shales and Jason Perkounis. And they will be telling us about our wonderful, the bid process for the flat roof and their recommendation to award. So I think Jason was the one who was ready to present on this. You can correct me if I'm wrong.
Lot of pressure, Julie. But yeah, I think, I believe in your board packets, you have the recommendation to award. You have the bid tabulations as well as the overall project costs. So I just wanted to start off by saying we had, you know, great bidder participation. We had, you know, seven bids. So we worked diligently to find bidders. Trumco, the roofing manufacturer, also was a very helpful resource in providing that. I mean, just within the, the first four bids, they were all within 10%, 10% of each other. So very, very tight numbers. So, you know, the RTA that you have does include a deductive alternate for a little bit of sheet metal removal or replacement or sheet metal work that we thought that was advantageous to accept at this time. Just, you know, Ian and I both sat down with Rutherford Roofing. Rutherford is a, one of the, one of the top installers of this Trumco system, is very familiar with the system. Is, it has multiple crews that do it and they do, you know, millions of dollars with the work of this stuff every year. So they're, we're lucky, we're, we're lucky to have them. They didn't understand the scope, understand the phasings, all the intricacies, intricacies of the job. There's a little bit of replacement, some roof repairs and some redoing, some of the areas are more heavily than others. And then doing that overall coating, a little bit of sheet metal work here. So it, we're, we're excited to have them. The overall cost report I provided, we provided, does, does list all the items broken out, the soft costs, the hard costs for the bids, also has a couple of items below for some painting work and some exterior glazing work. There's a couple of pieces of broken glass that, you know, we're gonna have them, you know, have the glazing contractor repair. And, you know, also kind of just troubleshoot the wall, especially where on the, on the library where it meets the standing seam roof, just to make sure that's all intact and is draining properly. This way, when we replace the roof, you know, we make sure everything's not drained into the roof, it's drained out of the system before it hits the roof. So, so even with all those items, roof ladders to improve your access, we're still $250,000 over what was budgeted in the billing assessment before. So great news. Just, it's a great product and.
Just, just to clarify, we really don't have any broken glass. We have a couple of panes that have broken seals.
Exactly.
So they're condensating. There's not broken glass, I promise you.
I, thank you. Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah. We don't have any broken windows. It's just, yeah, there's, there's, there's fog between the, the panes and a few of the panels and the seal's broken and it's time to replace them. So thanks, Ian. Sorry.
And the best news is that they are bringing this to us. A million dollar project just became a three-quarter million dollar project thanks to this team and finding a cost, more cost-effective way to accomplish this project and to do it well. So we're very excited to put this before you tonight.
Yes, thank you very much. The, I, I have maybe just a couple of questions. But one is, on the, I'm just sort of curious, on the, on the letter that describes the roofing work, and this is on page 26 of the board packet. I don't know which, what page it is and on for the, for our guests. But the, it's the page that describes that the, that the base bid with alternative number three is $525,985. Okay, I think maybe I understand this. And then down further, it talks about there being credits for removal. But isn't that $525,000 already factors all of that in?
Yeah, yes. Yes, it does. It, that 525 is the base bid for the lowest bidder plus with the deduct from alternate three.
Okay.
Yeah. And I just listed the other ones just to show what they were. Probably didn't need to include that. Sorry.
It's very, it's, it's very well put together. And the, the, can you just expand a little bit on kind of your experience with this company? Or kind of what, you know, their place kind of in this, in this industry and reputation and things like that?
Yeah, so they are, like I was saying before, they are like one of the largest manufacturers of this coating. It's them and like Malkor Roofing probably do the most square footage of this product. They're known around the area. We did check some references. I do have other colleagues besides Trumco in the roofing industry that I've contacted that, you know, are, they're, they're very well-known, a very, they've been along a long time and have just an outstanding reputation within the industry from clients to vendors to other construction managers and stuff like that. So honestly, I feel pretty lucky that we have them. Just my feeling on it. I'm just, you know, it's, it's nice to have someone that has that much experience.
Well, and it sounds like it's one of those, those situations where the, to get the low-cost bidder, who actually is someone that you, you know, that you're very comfortable doing business with too, is a good place to be.
It doesn't always happen. You're right. Yeah.
We have another project with a roofer as well that we're not as excited about as the one we have for you too.
Yeah.
Well, thank you for, you know, for knowing everyone who put all the hard work into this. Do we have any, Dave?
I had one just more curiosity thing. A couple of the alternates are apparently things that you thought early on in the project might need to be done. You just decided that they did not in fact need to be done. The, the roof drains and the roof hatch, for example.
Yeah, so the, the removal of the roof hatch, or the, I'll just start with alternate one, the roof drain. So that was, that was an alternate add price to replace them all. Just so we know what that is. We also, within the bid, have a unit price to change out each drain. Generally, the drains look pretty good. So we're just gonna go on a case-by-case basis on that. The replacement of the roof hatch, alternate two, we did, before it went out to bid, did talk to Ian. And I think he did some replacing of that, so the hinges that make it easier to open. There's nothing wrong with the roof hatch. And it just, it was, it was at the time during the assessment, I believe, just a little bit hard to open. And it's, that's since been rectified.
Yeah, the lock, the lock was malfunctioning and the, the, it just hadn't been taken care of. I mean, that, that's the bottom line. It hadn't had maintenance done on it. So I, I recabled the lock and got that operational. And then I, you know, it's just a yearly thing, go up there and grease the struts and exercise it. And, you know, it doesn't get used every day. So it's, after it sits for a little bit, it just needs a little bit of exercise, kind of like me.
Well, I'm happy to hear that our, our roof hatch is in good shape and has been exercising some.
Yes.
That's Ian's favorite ladder on the, at the library.
Yeah, no, it's totally not.
And then alternate three is the one we're accepting. There's a couple of large roof areas where the existing sheet metal was called to be removed. The coating installed over like the, the parapet and the, and the, the coping put back on. The roofing manufacturer's okay with us running up the coating to the bottom of the roofing and still private, or to the bottom of the coping and still providing a warranty. So we thought that was an advantageous one to accept at this time. We just hate to remove all that coping. It doesn't go back all together as well as it is right now. And, you know, you're gonna have problems over the years. And, you know, it, it's been there for a long time. Let's leave it there is kind of the, the, our thought on that. And then alternate four, just, it wasn't like, just enough to, honestly, the amount that was there is, it's not worth it. Let's let them do what's in the base bid. It's not worth the $2,000 savings at this time for what we're getting. So.
I have a quick question just on this, on the recommendation letter. Above where you have the alternates kind of listed out, it says the following alternates were included in the bid. Alternates three has been, alternate three is accepted and one, two, and three have been rejected. I'm assuming that's one, two, and four, right?
Yes, I'm sorry. Let me correct that. I apologize for that. A lot of numbers on this thing and I, you know, I apologize. I'll, I'll correct that and get that back to, to everyone.
I didn't even notice that.
Good catch.
Yeah, good catch, but didn't affect the numbers, but. Thank you.
Okay, do we have any other questions or comments regarding the Roof Replacement Project Bid Award? Okay, do we have a motion to approve the Roof Replacement Project Bid Award?
I will make a motion to approve the bid removal project, what, whatever that was. I'll make a.
Nice job.
Thank you.
I second what you said.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the Roof Replacement Project Bid Award that has been seconded. Kaitlyn, can you proceed with the roll call, please?
Trustee Doherty.
Yes.
Trustee Gagani.
Yes.
Trustee Humphreys.
Yes.
Trustee Kuntia.
Yes.
Trustee Stapleton.
Yes.
President Graber.
Yes, thank you very much. We have approved the Roof Replacement Project Bid Award. We're now on to agenda item 8B, Biblioteca Annual Service and Maintenance Agreement Renewal. I feel like I'm in like, this is like Groundhog's Day right now. I think we've been, this is an annual thing, right?
Yep, this one comes around every year at this time. So this is our automated material handler, including the induction points and the conveyor system, the sorting stations, the self-checks, the credit card swipes, the RFID stations, and all of the software to power all of those things, as well as two preventative maintenance tune-ups per year by Biblioteca in addition to any service that's required. And we, those are used by us, those two tune-ups, we make sure we get them right on schedule every year. Keeps the machine running properly. And as you all know, this thing is kind of the heart of our circulation department. And it's our own personal robot and people, and I know the kids all like looking through the window and watching the sorter work. So this is what keeps the sorter working. There, it is a little bit less than last year's maintenance agreement due to the new self-checks that came with a one-year warranty that were purchased partway through last year. And so this reflects the prorated amount, so that the cost of this maintenance contract is expected to rise next year due to the proration.
Okay, I thought it did look a little bit less. Okay, John, are you?
Yep, tapping out.
John and Jason are not masochists, so they don't have to stay in.
Alex just went quietly.
You can watch on YouTube later. You can watch on YouTube, it'll be there.
Yes, because you know how excited.
A couple of years' worth online if you really like them, but.
I'll ask Kaitlyn for an email, you know, with the link to it, so it'll.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you, gentlemen.
So I did, I did, Julie noticed, I thought it looked a little, it's usually in the $40,000-ish range if I read correctly. But I think as we've learned, this is not really a, I mean, technically, we do have the option as to whether or not to approve it, but there's not really an option as far as from the library's perspective, this is just kind of an absolute necessity to have. And so I'm supportive of renewing the agreement, but I'm happy to hear anybody, anyone else's questions or comments.
I was just gonna comment that with what the service fee is and then the 250 an hour on top of that, you're at 900 something for a service call. So for this contract at under $37,000, that would equal, if you ever called more than 40 hours, a work week. So I assume that you're using them more than 40 hours a week. That would be the only alternative would be to pay out of pocket per service fee. And you're saying it makes sense that $37,000 is a better deal.
And the tune-ups make for a fairly significant amount as well.
Okay, do we have, once we have any other questions, do we have a motion to approve the Biblioteca Annual Service and Maintenance Agreement Renewal?
I'll move to approve the Biblioteca Annual Service and Maintenance Agreement.
I'll second.
Thank you, Trustee Kuntia. She got in there before Barnali, or before Swatna. So, okay, so we have a motion to approve the Biblioteca Annual Service and Maintenance Agreement Renewal that has been seconded by Trustee Kuntia. Kaitlyn, can you proceed with the roll call, please?
Trustee Doherty.
Yes.
Trustee Gagani.
Yes.
Trustee Humphreys.
Yes.
Trustee Kuntia.
Yes.
Trustee Stapleton.
Yes.
President Graber.
Yes, thank you very much. We have approved the Biblioteca Annual Service and Maintenance Agreement Renewal. We're now on to agenda item 9A, the COVID-19 Response and Phased Reopening Plan. Do you, Julie, before we move on this agenda item, could you just maybe give us your thoughts on kind of how things are going and how the phased reopening plan is working?
Well, it's the agenda item that just won't leave, just like the COVID-19 virus. So we will keep going with this for as long as we need to. So we did reopen to the public on February 1st. Things have gone fairly smoothly. We do have a number of folks who are currently banned from the library for repeated mask violations. The one warning policy has caused a little bit of consternation with folks, but it has also given us an opportunity to help some folks out. Our security monitor, Tony Druffke, has now helped multiple patrons with the disposable masks by kind of teaching them how to use the, the nose piece. Apparently, we had a number of seniors, there was one gentleman who was wearing his upside down. He didn't notice, he didn't know that there was a nose piece that he could form and put his glasses over and would help him keep his glasses from fogging and keep his mask in. that he could form and put his glasses over and would help him keep his glasses from fogging and keep his mask in place. So Tony has been really great at kind of, here, try this mask and this is how you use it and it will help you. And so that's been good. We are continuing at the reduced hours at this mo, at this time. We are also one-hour visits with 45-minute computer sessions per, one per person per day. We are looking at, we did reopen the Curtis Street entrance as well. We have door monitors at both positions who are monitoring our capacity. We did update the app that we were using to one that's a little more accurate and better at, at refreshing to both entrances to keep us in capacity. And we do have staff that are continuing to work remotely as their duties permit. We are planning as of March 1st to move to our phase four, which is beyond just reopening and starting to gradually phase back in hours and services. So we're looking at increasing visits to two hours, increasing PC sessions to 90 minutes. And then the, the 3rd of March, when the management team meets, we will be, start discussing our next steps, which is the tables and chairs restoration plan that we had actually started discussing back in November when we had to close abruptly. So we're bringing that back, probably going to start that. Look for that later in March more than likely. As long as things in Illinois Region Eight and throughout the state continue to improve, we are out of the resurgence mitigations and into Illinois Restore Illinois Plan Phase Four. So that's been going very well. And that also increases meeting size to 50 people or 50% of room capacity, whichever is less. Well, the other thing that has happened is the 24-hour quarantine that was just, came into play, rails went ahead. And due to the body of scientific studies that have show, have not shown that contact is a high risk for transmission of the virus, have reduced their recommendation for quarantine from three days to 24 hours. And in doing that, we were able to move our quarantine of items from the meeting room into the circulation workroom and the former book drop room. They had done some clean-out work in preparation for this. And so that will allow us to reclaim the meeting room. We do have a bonus project that Ian is undertaking at this time. We have taken the opportunity to remove the wallpaper that has been in that meeting room since 1999 and get those walls all prepped and they will be painted. They're going to be painted the same kind of taupey beige that's in the staff lounge. So it will look good with the new carpet and the whole room will be refreshed. And that does include the divider wall. So that will be refreshed and ready to go in March. But the project will take a little time because that's a kind of a big job to get all of that wallpaper off and those walls prepped and primed and ready to go again. So that will also give us an opportunity to start talking about in-person programming. And in addition to that, we will be monitoring the Open Meetings Act and the whatever happens with the next executive order and whether or not we need to start have this, having this board meet all or partially in person and in that large meeting room. I know, it's kind of, ah, do you even want to think about that yet? But it's time to kind of bear that in mind that at some point we will have to be back. But reclaiming the meeting room is a huge leap forward for us in doing anything in person in this library. So as of the 3rd, the management team will be figuring out what our next steps are. Does anybody have any questions or feedback about where we are? Your expectations about where we might be at various points? How are you feeling about all this? Go ahead, Dave.
Yeah. I had a couple of questions, just informational things. Approximately, how many people are we having in the library at a time currently? And after March?
At the moment, we seem to be averaging somewhere around a couple dozen at any given time. I believe the highest we've gotten was 50-something. Jen, correct me if I'm wrong. But I believe that's, that's as high as I've seen it get at one time. Our overall capacity is 80, what did we decide, 86, 87, 80?
I thought it was 80, yeah.
Okay. So we haven't even gotten, we haven't gotten near our app, our cutoff.
We're not turning anybody away and I knew that, I just wanted to emphasize that. And the second floor meeting rooms, study rooms and so forth, are we, they've got furniture in them at the moment.
Furniture or staff?
March, we're going to start pulling some of that out or?
Yes, and so the conference, primarily it's the conference rooms and the kids program room that are being used for furniture storage. And the study rooms are being used primarily as alternative staff spaces so that, to de-densify our workrooms. So as.
Is our staff going to feel comfortable giving that up or are we going to want to continue that for a while?
That will be under discussion at the next management team meeting and whether or, and whether we can kind of tighten up the use of those for staff spaces where it's not, we have a couple where like a single person is using that kind of like a private office. If we can look at how we're staggering the uses of those to be more efficient and so that we're ready at some point in the near future to reopen those for public use.
Okay, any additional questions regarding agenda item nine A, COVID-19 response and phased reopening plan? Okay, do we have a motion to reauthorize the library director to continue to make temporary policy changes in consultation with the board president within parameters of COVID-19 response and reopening phasing plan as presented?
I'll move.
Okay. Do we have a second? Okay, Tim is seconding it. We have a motion to approve agenda item nine A, the COVID-19 response and phased reopening plan as presented. It has been seconded. Caitlin, can you proceed with the roll call, please?
Trustee Doherty?
Yes.
Trustee Gagani?
Yes.
Trustee Humphries?
Yes.
Trustee Kuntia?
Yes.
Trustee Stapleton?
Yes.
President Graber?
Yes, thank you very much. We have approved the agenda item nine A, COVID-19 response and phased reopening plan as presented. We're now on to agenda item number 10, the library director's report. Julie?
Yes. All right, well, we're, we're doing, we're doing the work on the equity, diversity and inclusion initiatives. The leadership team has had two of its four sessions with Rashida and we, we had some really great conversation. And it really did spark a lot of deep thought and a lot of team building, I would say. We're really coming together as a leadership team through this process and it's been a great opportunity for us to think about how we think about things. So our next step is to get that equity advisory team scheduled for their meetings. We do have our, our full group. We are just waiting at the moment for our final member to provide his Kavanaugh Gray, who will be cycling off the village council and coming on to our equity advisory team, has promised to get me his schedule availability for the next couple of months by the end of this week. So that will help us and we are looking, those meetings are likely to be primarily weekday evenings, given everyone's schedule. Another initiative that we are doing, we are doing some other kind of tangential things that are outside of the scope of our work with, with RGW Consulting, but are really kind of furthering our EDI initiatives. And that is, we're doing some diversity audits of the, the collections, the books being used for book discussions, some programming kinds of things. So book lists and, and really trying to get a handle on how we're creating those and making sure that we are keeping our equity lens when we are creating those items and selecting for the collection. And a staff member also brought forward the idea of a land acknowledgement and using a land acknowledgement for library programming and just on the library's website in general. Jen has been doing some work with the Illinois Library Association's Best Practices Committee around EDI. And one of the things that they have been working on was a land acknowledgement for use by ILA that could be a template for libraries throughout the state. The suggestion was to create one that was more specific to Downers Grove. So we have reached out to the Downers Grove Historical Museum, who has been working with a professor from Ohio State University, or was it University of Ohio? Now I don't remember, his name is John Lo, about more specific land acknowledgement for our region and for, for this Downers Grove specifically. So we will be working with the Historical Museum on that and hoping that we can maybe kind of take the lead on getting this into practical use for not only the library, but also the Park District and our other government entities in Downers Grove. It would be silly for us to reinvent the wheel if we all have, if we do the research on the, the land acknowledgement. So looking forward to having that and getting that into common usage. What was the next thing? So happy with our progress there. The, oh, the vaccinations for library workers. We did unfortunately receive the five, basically final word from DuPage County Health Department that they would not be including any library workers in the 1B group for vaccinations. However, frontline library workers are anticipated to be in the group 1C. So we'll be waiting, waiting for that a little bit impatiently. Our staff is, is very anxious to, to be able to be vaccinated. We are encouraging.
Ian could do the vaccinations.
No problem. It goes right along with the PPE he's providing for all of us. So we are encouraging staff to get their vaccinations. We do allow them to use the employer-paid sick leave to cover any, if anybody has a reaction to a vaccination. So we are, are trying to encourage that as much as possible. For the Aspen Discovery Project, that beta catalog in, should appear on the library's website sometime in early March. It will be a little button, you know, in the upper right-hand corner of the library's main webpage where there's the search our catalog box. There will be a button next to it that will, and I don't even remember what the verbiage will be, but something like beta catalog or test catalog, where you would be able to go in and try that new catalog. They are still working on some of the issues that they had encountered. They've fast-tracked some additional software patches for the things that we've been identifying. However, I must say that our, the usability testing was incredibly favorable by patrons. They really liked this catalog. So we're hoping that everybody does and that all of this work pays off. And then I, the Illinois Public Library Per-Cabinet Grant Application was submitted and that's included in your packet. And then Jen just submitted the Illinois Public Library Annual Report to the Illinois State Library. Kudos to Jen for all of her hard work on compiling all of the statistics for that.
And Caitlin.
And Caitlin, yes, absolutely. It's, it's a team effort. And that will be in your next board packet. So we'll highlight some of those, some of those statistics next month. And other than that, I just want to thank you all for your support and sympathy during the, this past month with all of the things going on with my family and my father's passing. I really appreciated your support and, and how you were able and just, I, I needed that and it was great to have you behind me.
Thank you very much, Julie. We're lucky to have you. We appreciate everything you do. I had just maybe one question about the, the, we, looks like we have a very strong equity advisory team that has been put together. And I was just kind of wondering, and this maybe goes back to kind of some of the things that Rashida had talked about when she had made her presentation to us, but like, is ultimately the equity advisory team is, I mean, obviously ideas can come from anywhere, but is that kind of the place where they get sort of discussed and then maybe recommendations come to the board or come to the library from there?
Yeah, the number one task of the equity advisory team is to create, in this first year, is to create the equity strategic plans for us. And then moving forward, they will be kind of shepherding us through that, evaluating how those things are doing and then taking those next steps and determining what those next steps should be. We anticipate that that equity advisory team will continue past the creation of the equity strategic plan. But people may come on, go off, give some other folks a chance to, a chance to participate. But this original group, their task is to create the equity strategic plan. That's their number one to do.
Excellent, thank you.
Thanks, Barnali, for being on that.
Yes, thank you. Right, any additional questions for Julie before we move on to agenda item number 11?
I'm not quite sure whether there are questions for Julie or just general board member requests or whatever, but. But I had a couple, one was, a lot of buildings in, across the country had leaky roofs over the last couple of weeks because of the heavy snow and the subsequent melting and stuff like that. Have we had any issues with that that we were not expecting?
No.
I'll take that as a no.
No, no, but now that you said it, I'm going to knock on wood just in case, so.
Well, I'm sorry, I brought it up. We did just approve a roofing contract.
That's what I'm saying, we just got one more month. We got to make it with the old one, right? So now I have a, I was wondering the same thing, since, you know, we've had this really quick warm-up. And, you know, it's the first thing I do in the morning when I do my morning walk-through of the interior facility is I'm like constantly looking up at the ceiling to see if I see anything or any evidence, and I have not seen anything. So that's, that's a good thing.
Well, that big red brick building across the street called a church has had a lot of problems, and so-
Okay.
Major work to do this summer to, it's insured luckily, but so I've got that on my mind. Secondly, I'm thrilled that Kavanaugh Gray is going to be a member of our advisory committee. He's been on the Village Council for a while. He's not running for reelection. Their loss is our gain, so I'm happy that he's going to be working with our advisory committee. I'm, I'm happy to hear the land acknowledgement discussion. This is the, it, there's a lot of this going on because this is the fourth organization in the last couple of months that has been discussing this, and it's about time we're discussing these things. And I would hope as soon as we get that sort of put together, we can have some programming around that to not only acknowledge the source of our land, but engage our community and, and talking about it. And, because it's not something that you've talked about a whole lot, so. And lastly, I'm getting my second vaccine shot on Saturday. So I'm going to put in some paperwork to get sick leave for a couple of days for, from the library, I think. So think of me Saturday and Sunday.
Great.
Good luck.
But I'm, but I'm thrilled, so.
Absolutely. Okay, I will categorize those as falling under Agenda Item Number 11. Thank you very much, Trustee Humphries. Do we have any other trustee comments or requests for information?
When reading today, I thought of an idea that we did such a great job with things for the community, and I was wondering if we'd ever thought about a recycling of batteries day where people can drop them off or a nonprofit, how Jen, how you've used so many different nonprofits. I actually don't know if there's a nonprofit that does that anymore, or does that at all. But who used to do that was like a Best Buy. And so I would accumulate all these batteries, and they don't do that anymore. So you have this big bag of batteries, and that's made me think of it. I read about some other recycling type event in our notes, and I just thought I'd throw it out there, there's not as many places to do that and the village does shredding events and things like that, where you could do it around a programming about the environment and recycling, something like that.
We will take that to the programming team. Who, I have to just say, our programming team has been amazing through all of this. They have pivoted and completely redone how they do programming, and they've just been amazing. We've had great response. And particularly shout out to Karen Banerik, who is our adult and team services programming coordinator, who has just really put on some great programs for us and just found some really fantastic things and in a very different way than she's ever had to create programs for the library before.
Yeah, I guess I learned that you can put them in the garbage, but I think we want the message to be that, to the teens and so forth, not to. And then myself, I, the closest place is in Bolingbrook, like a Batteries Plus. So if you guys collected them, you could all take them to Batteries Plus, but.
Thank you. Any additional trustee comments or requests for information? Trustee Dougherty?
Yeah, I also don't know if this falls in this or Agenda Item 11. So first, I just wanted to say, I don't know all of the library managers very well. Like, I probably could pick them out if I went on site. But I just wanted to say that I really appreciate the way that the report is written and how I can actually hear their voices come through in there, in the way that they, you know, present what they've been working on for the last month. I, you know, it's just good, it's good to hear that, even though we don't get to engage with them every, every meeting to really understand kind of their personalities coming out and what they're excited about and what they've been working on. I just, I really like that that remains there, you know, that kind of unique voice that everyone brings. And then the second comment, I guess, and question is related to the circulation and programming data on the last couple pages. I was thinking, gosh, next month or maybe the month after will be the month where we start comparing apples to apples in a way again, kind of, sort of, right? So right now, we're comparing 2019 like full-on, we're open data to this year, which is not the same. And I was just curious, you know, I know it's hard to compare year over year in our own library, but looking at like the last year versus other libraries, you know, obviously, we've had declines in circulation, we've had declines in program attendance, all of those things. Is that, do we know is that comparable to other libraries in our region that have, you know, had similar patterns of opening and closing like Downers Grove?
Yes, and particularly the, the data that we have most readily at hand is SWAN, our catalog consortium, obviously, because we can see them, and they give us reports regularly. Downers Grove has actually been one of the busiest libraries during all of this. We have gotten to kind of a higher percentage of circulation, and we'll be highlighting that in the IFLA report next month. But typically, libraries in the pandemic range have been running at about 60%-ish of, of circulation throughout the pandemic. So that, that seems to be the common number. Our circulation's a little bit higher than that, and despite the fact that our visits are about 40%, I believe, of what they were in the prior year.
It's just really, it's really interesting, and I'm sure we'll have lots to say about that five years from now when we're looking back and, you know, looking at all this stuff. But it's, thank you for sharing that.
Thank you. Any additional trustee comments or requests for information? All right, we are on to Agenda Item Number 12, and I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you very much, everyone, and see you next month.